Is it open, please? Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have a roll call?
Of course. We'll start with Chair Carmelo Aquindo.
Present.
Vice Chair Maria Carney.
Present.
Member Philip Lantry.
Present.
Member Jeff Rivera have as unexcused absence. Member Don Grigsby.
Present.
Member Nanette Douglas.
Present.
Member Russell Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum, and Ms. Douglas will be a voting member this evening. You'll all obviously be able to participate, but Ms. Douglas will be the fifth voting member of the commission this evening.
Okay.
And for the record, I'd like to apologize for the last meeting that I wasn't available. I was with my mother-in-law with some problems at the hospital. She was declared stage four cancer, and I was trying to deal with some stuff for her.
Very sorry to hear that.
We're sorry to hear that.
Of course, we're sorry to hear that, Mr. Chairman. That can be addressed when the minutes are addressed here from last meeting.
Okay. Can everybody look over the minutes? And can I get a motion, please, for the last meeting?
Just as a suggestion to the commission, in light of Mr. Aquindo's information provided here this evening, the one area on the minutes would be the list as an excused absence as opposed to unexcused on the minutes as drafted would be my recommendation to the commission.
To note it when you make a motion.
To note it when you make a motion, correct.
I'd like to move to approve the minutes with the additional change of an excused absence for Chairman Aquindo.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Those are approved as amended.
Okay. We'll be opening new business today, and first thing on the agenda will be ordinance number 2023-23, DRC case ZMA 23-0006.
Hello.
Hello. I'm Tammy Reiki, Associate Planner, and I'll be presenting this case today. Before I start the presentation, I just wanted to make a correction on the staff report that was printed. Under the background information on the first page, the third paragraph, the zoning map amendment to R3, and the staff report is stated single-family dwelling, but it's multifamily dwelling. So the request on the left-side column of the staff report was correct, but the one in the body of the background, it was just a typo. So for ordinance 2323, the applicant is requesting consideration of a zoning map amendment from MHA, which is manufactured mobile home annexation, and MH2 residential to R3 zoning multifamily dwelling for approximately 4.08 acres of land identified as Davis Island at 2256 Missouri Avenue. So the future land use for the area is medium-density residential, which is compatible with the applicant's request. The existing zoning is MHA, manufactured mobile home annexation, and MH2 residential manufactured mobile home. The proposed zoning is R3 multifamily dwelling, and the development is compatible with the surrounding area, and we don't anticipate any adverse impacts on city facilities. The strategic plan goal that this request is meeting is growth management, to create a vibrant, progressive, and diverse community through sustainable planning for all generations. And our recommendation is approval of ordinance 23-23. Staff is available for any questions, and the applicant is here as well to answer any questions.
Would the applicant like to come up and speak? State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. Jeremy Kibler, KDA Engineering, 2017, 13th Street, St. Cloud, Florida, 34769. I'm here tonight representing the owner. We respectfully request your consideration of staff's recommendation of approval, and also respectfully ask for your recommendation of approval to the City Council, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
More members, do you have any question?
What is there now? I guess, who?
Mobile home.
I know, but how many? Like, what's, what is it made up of right now? Because it looks like it says 80 is what the anticipation is, so can you answer that?
Jeremy Kibler again. Currently existing within the boundaries of the subject, two parcels that have been included in this application, we have a total of five existing mobile homes. So the property is not completely built out with mobile homes at this time. That is the current permitted use. And just to add a note, the MHA zoning designation is only assigned at the time when a property is annexed. It can't be requested for any property within the city limits, and this property was involuntarily annexed some time ago from the county. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would like to know how many homes are you going to put in there?
Again, Jeremy Kibler, it's, at this point, it would just be an approximation. The permitted uses, what, the reason, the request for the R3 zoning is that it's basically the only other existing compatible zoning district for the medium-density residential future land use. The permitted uses for the R3 zoning district are single-family, duplex, a multifamily unit, which would, could not exceed 35 feet in height, which basically is two stories, like a two-story rental townhouse would look like a townhouse, or a cluster-style development. So just to run through some approximate numbers, if it were to be, let's say entirely townhomes, you'd be looking at something around maybe 30 townhomes, and that's taking into account the city's new adopted residential architectural standards, which would be, essentially in this case, would be proposed as a nice rear-load, alley-load product. So you would see the front of the townhouse, the garage would be in the rear. For single-family, you would be looking at something like 19 units or so. Duplex, approximately 16. Those are just conceptual numbers based on what the permitted use would allow for the R3 zoning district.
There's a lot of houses in there.
It's not, those are, those numbers are independent, so they wouldn't coexist at the same time.
So at this time, you don't know exactly which product you're going to put on the property. It's just up to see what you can do with the property.
Correct, correct. I mean, essentially, we would bring a, the next step, if it's a subdivision, we'd bring forward a preliminary subdivision plan, and that would have to go before the council for full review as far as configuration, lot sizes, setbacks, you know, everything that goes along with the subdivision itself, and then also the site development plan. So there's a lot of design, a lot of considerations that would need to be accounted for. I guess the one thing to state is that if we did nothing, if we did nothing, and we kept the zoning as it is today, you know, our approximate density with the mobile homes would be, would be also in the 25 to 29 unit range. So essentially, the density remains the same. We already have medium-density future land use in place. We're not asking for a future land use change. This is just a compatible zoning district request. With the current zoning district, all we can build is mobile homes. That's it. So we're not allowed to build anything else. That's the reason for the request, to allow that variety in product.
I have a question. It's actually for city staff. You may know the answer to this, but I just wanted to ask about the notice of public hearing that was mailed out. Did that have the correct language on it about what the proposed zoning map amendment was, or was that incorrect that went out?
No, that was correct. It was just in the body of the staff report.
Okay, so the notices that went out said that the applicant was requesting for multifamily R3.
So the R3 zoning district, the way that we name it is multifamily. So that's just the zoning district designation is R3 multifamily, but within R3, like the applicant was explaining, there's several products that can be built.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that's the language that went out in the notices.
Yeah, of course. But yeah, on our zoning map and on our zoning table, the R3, we just called it multifamily, but it allows for all those products. So it would just be when they are ready to submit their plans, to see what kind of product would fit best in that area.
Mr. Lantry, if I may, again, Jeremy Kibler, just because we were responsible for posting the sign on the subject site, I can also confirm that the sign did indicate multifamily on the sign itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for them? If not, I will be closing the, closing the floor and opening it for public comments. Do we have any public comments?
If I could, just for the commission, but for the benefit of our audience, for anyone that wishes to speak on any case here this evening, certainly come forward. There are forms, if you haven't already filled a form out, to submit to our clerk either prior to or after you make your presentation, and then come to the podium and identify yourself by name and address. And keep in mind, with your comments, that the commission is here to take your feedback, absolutely, but is not here to answer questions of the public, but to certainly hear from the public with whatever feedback the public deems necessary.
Also wanted to add that since we have so many issues going forward today, that we're having a three-minute time limit for whoever wants to speak.
If anyone wishes to speak on this case, come forward now or indicate. Otherwise, the commission will...
Okay, we'll be closing the floor for public comments. Any question amongst yourselves?
I think a gentleman has a comment.
Yes, sir.
My name is John Daniel, resident off of Missouri Avenue, and it, my, our concern is with traffic, just like everybody else. Sky Lake Estates is operating over there, and as, we're just work, I understand that you got the maximum of 30, and then you got something similar to motor, mobile home, but multifamily might include a little bit more traffic in that area. And that's just a major concern in, you know, in our neighborhood. I just want to go on record to say that.
Thank you very much. So if you haven't, could you fill out a form for a clerk? Thank you.
Anybody else from the public before I close it again? Okay. If any of the council members don't have any other questions, may I get a motion, please?
After, after, just a reminder, I know we haven't done this for a little while. Once the public comment is closed and the public meeting portion is closed, then it's proper to have discussion amongst the commission members, and then during the discussion, or if no discussion, then a motion can be brought forward.
I just have a question also for city staff. Is the, the current housing around this property, are these all single-family currently? On, you know, for instance, Darby, Crystal, Wakava, Lakewood, the surrounding streets there?
Yes. So we can see in the zoning map, the immediate properties around it are also mobile homes, but the properties across the street are single-family. And then the Sky Lakes subdivision also across the street has townhomes products and single-family products. So we have a mix of residential products in that area.
Where is the school bus pickup in that area?
I'm not sure about that.
For all that traffic in the morning. Sorry, ladies.
Dagmar Isagara, Planning Manager. That question is really by the school district, and they reviewed this application as well, and they have no recommendations at this time. As the applicants stated, after they rezoned, they go through the subdivision process, which will go through a preliminary subdivision plan. And at that time, when we have a more understanding of how many lots are they going to be fitting in the site, that's when the school district will make their projections and will determine where are going to be their needs. But at this time, we don't have that information on where is pickup or drop-off of kids in the area. That answer your question?
That section of Missouri Avenue is paved, right?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure it is. I just wanted to make sure.
It's just that I've been watching the school buses and the ambulance and the cups and everything, and it's just getting super tight for people to keep building, and how many houses are going to be on the street, because not everybody's going to leave at 5:00 in the morning and, you know, clear the streets and get the kids out and, you know.
One piece of information that I didn't mention is that part of the preliminary subdivision process is the traffic generation and any improvements that might be required on the road based on the traffic generation of the project. So if there is any improvements required to that road to accommodate the traffic that this project is going to generate, it will be, there will be study at that time. So any future improvement on the road that might be in conflict with the school traffic or any sort of thing, it will be determined at the time of the preliminary subdivision plan.
Because we're not approving or giving any input on what they're putting there right now. We're just talking about the zoning.
Yes.
So that they, if they want to do something other than manufactured home, which is the only thing they can do now, that's all that we're doing right now.
Correct. The R3 gives them a little bit of flexibility for the future planning.
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll see them back later when they decide what they want to put on there.
Yes.
Any other questions amongst yourselves?
No.
Anybody like to motion?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number, let me find it again, ZMA 23-00006 slash 2023-23, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code. I second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Nay.
4-1 passes 4-1. Recommendation of approval passes 4-1. Ms. Carney, voting nay.
We're going to be moving on to DRC case number CPA 23-0003, ordinance number 2023-24. Would you be doing that in conjunction with the other one?
Yes, please.
Which will be DRC case number ZMA 23-0003, ordinance number 2023-25.
Good evening, members of the council. This is Tisha Manning, Senior Planner for Community Development. I am going to be presenting to you consecutively a comprehensive plan amendment as well as a zoning map amendment for approximately 0.32 acres known as the Ohio Avenue Commercial Complex. It is located approximately south of 11th Street, north of 12th Street, east of Florida Avenue, and west of Ohio. The applicant is requesting approval, and staff does recommend approval. The existing future land use right now is private institutional, and the proposed future land use is commercial. The existing zoning is professional with the proposed zoning of CBD 2, which is Central Business District 2. Development is compatible with the surrounding area and poses no adverse impacts on city facilities.
Ms. Manning, before, I'm sorry to interrupt you before you go. I know you wish to take items B and C together, but I think the chairman should read both of the items into the record that they're being heard, also for, because I don't think that they were both read into what's being called forward. I know you announced that, but, Mr. Chairman, if you'd call both of these cases forward so that the public knows that both of these items, B and C, are being heard simultaneously. I'm sorry, Ms. Manning.
I believe I did, but I'll redo it again.
Was that done? Thank you. I apologize.
He needs some Cuban cafe.
Called bad hearing. Thank you.
So, no problem. So the, here is the future land use in the zoning map, and I do want to point out that in that area, again, you'll notice here that this is the property. Everything around it is private institutional, but there are some transitions going to commercial to the west of the property as well as to the south. Same thing here on the zoning map. It's already private institutional, I mean, I'm sorry, professional, but you can see next to it is already CBD 2. It is in alignment with our strategic plan goal of growth management, and again, staff does recommend approval, and likewise, we ask that the planning commission recommend approval of the ordinances 2023-24 and 2023-25. And staff is available for any comments, as well as the applicant is available.
Can I just ask it for edification? What central business district, professional business, commercial, what are the biggest differences between that?
So, a lot of times, professional comes before you, and people want to build office buildings, you know, medical offices and spaces like that. The Central Business District was established as, Central Business District 2 was established second to CBD 1, and it's really for the downtown area because we want to have a certain look and feel of that area of shops and things that go into that. So this is where this is located, within that, within the area of the downtown, kind of extending it out, but also allowing various commercials to come in without such high intensity that professional or highway business would bring.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, and just checking my understanding, so the concept is, once it goes commercial, that's the potential for shops and such versus?
Correct. It's, it's, it's commercial now.
Okay.
Because it is, the current zoning is private institutional with the, I'm sorry, the current future land use is private institutional with the zoning of professional. So they can still bring in, you know, medical offices and things like that. Going to Central Business District, which is more in line with what we want in the downtown area, it allows for some different types of setbacks and gives us the ability for different aesthetics of what we want built in that area. So it's just a zoning, it's just a zoning from private institutional with professional zoning to commercial future land use with Central Business District zoning that just allows different aesthetics for the downtown area.
So there might be a few more things they have to adhere to in order to be a part of Central Business District?
Correct, and it has different setbacks and building heights and things like that.
Is the applicant available to speak? Or would like to speak? Just come and state your name in case they have any questions for you.
Eric Jarvis, J. Crew Construction, 3585 Kaiser Avenue in St. Cloud.
Anybody here have any question for the applicant?
Yeah, what are you going to do with it?
Right now, just, the main reason is getting rezoned because it was all rezoned as a professional district, which requires a certain amount of square footage for the lot usage, and with the current size of the lot, it does not meet those requirements. That's why it's mainly being rezoned to CBD 2 because it has a smaller lot size requirement. Pretty much the same, it'd be in line with what the professional district is, with building types, office space. That's what's playing with it. It just, it was too small, the lot, with the whole grid being rezoned at some, some point in time, it was rezoned to professional, so that's the reason it's being rezoned to us, allow for a smaller lot.
So you want to rezone it so that you can put something more professional?
Yes.
Business offices in?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions for the applicant from us? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We'll be opening up for public for any public comments. Yes, sir?
My name is Bob Beecham. I'm at 231 Wyoming Avenue. I have a couple of businesses downtown here, a couple of buildings, and one of the things, there's a couple of issues tonight with stuff going on in the downtown area near it that I don't know if you guys are aware, and she asked the question, what's the difference between CBD 1 and CBD 2? You know, a lot of times with CBD 1, I've had a business downtown here for 39 years this year. CBD 1, there's no parking requirements. Parking's a big issue. When you've got a business where you're relying on your customers to come in, you're wanting that a fast turnover. Somebody come in, stay a couple hours, boom, they're gone. That opens that space up for the next person to come in. Now, I'm not sure about CBD 2, but that is, it is something that maybe you can figure out a little more on, the parking issue there, when you change these to, you know, different types of usage, because it is a, a lot of these are small lots. But a lot of times, that's why people would have to buy two or three lots so they can, you know, put in some type of, I had a building that I bought over on Massachusetts Avenue, and it was like an act of God. It was a 25-foot lot, and they wanted me to put a drainage pond in because I was considered highway business, you know, because I was in the first block off the highway. It's a 25-foot lot, so I ended up selling the property, you know, because I couldn't do anything with it. So it's just, you know, kind of keep that in mind with the stuff that's going on tonight for downtown, if you would, please, you know, especially the parking requirements, you know, because it's a big struggle down there. They keep promising they're going to build a parking garage, but I've been here 39 years, and I've yet to see a parking garage, or even the parking issues getting taken care of. Thank you.
Sir, if you could make sure to fill out a form to save our clerk's...
For that one, too?
Yes, please. Every case that you speak on. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? Okay, we'll be closing public comments. Ladies and gentlemen, any questions amongst yourselves?
Well, my question is just going to be now to, I guess, staff and, since he brings up the idea of parking, et cetera, is there any concern about that? Is that something that we need to worry about at this point in time, or?
So the Central Business District, it has the same parking requirements in CBD 2 as CBD 1. So the parking requirements and no parking requirements don't change.
The requirements don't change, but the issue of it with everybody else might be different, I guess.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but the future of our city and what we, what we would like to have is a more walkable city, right?
Correct.
A more, so that doesn't necessarily take parking into account, because the hope is that people can move closer to downtown and can walk to places, and there won't be as much parking needed.
And so part of this area, again, the Central Business District, part of it is to make it more walkable, and that's why you see the, you know, things going on with, you know, the 10th Street and the transportation. All of that area is being taken into account when it comes into what they're going to do, how they're going to make it accessible. They definitely want to have it more pedestrian accessible as far as, you know, walkability, people to be able to bike to it. You know, they're looking at the golf court, golf cart, when it's different things like that. So this is all into account of that downtown area. Now, as we start to move away from that, that's, of course, when the TIA's and all of that starts to come into effect as far as how are we going to address parking and some of those other more intense commercial areas.
Thank you.
Any other questions between yourselves? Comments? Would anybody like to make a motion for DRC case? Let's do this one first. CPA 23-0003, ordinance number 2023-24.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number, you just read it. 2023-24, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Nay.
Passes 4-1. Motion to recommend approval passes 4-1.
We have DRC case number ZMA 23-0003, ordinance number 2023-25. Do I have a motion for that one?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2023-25, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
I say aye.
So, passes 5-0?
5-0.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, now, we'll be listening. Let me make sure here.
Sorry, yes, I apologize again for everyone here. My apologies. Terrible thing getting old.
We've got the same applicant for both of these. We'll read these together and then separate the vote. We got DRC case number CPA 23-00004, ordinance 2023-26, and DRC case ZMA 23-00004, ordinance 2023-27.
Good evening again, Commission. Tisha Manning, Senior Planner for Community Development. Before you is a comprehensive plan and a zoning map amendment for approximately 2.98, 2.91 acres known as 2351 Canoe Creek Road. The staff does recommend approval of these, of this, these requests, and the applicant also requests approval. The location is north of Fertig Road and east of Canoe Creek and west of Missouri Avenue. The existing future land use is low-density residential, and the proposed future land use is private institutional. The existing zoning is RE, which is single-family dwelling, and the proposed zoning is professional. The development is compatible with the surrounding area and does, and does not pose any adverse impact to city facilities. So, let's point out here on the future land use map, you can see here that all around it, of course, again, low-density residential, but this is also already zoned to private institutional, um, already future land use to private institutional. Likewise, on the zoning map, you see here that it is RE, residential, but the zoning directly to the south of it is professional. As well as, I also want to point out, across the street to the west is mixed use. It is in line with our strategic plan goal of growth management. And again, staff recommends approval and asks likewise that the planning commission also recommend approval on ordinances 2023-26 and 2023-27. And staff is available for comments, as well as the applicant is available, if you have any questions.
Have any questions for staff?
What are they putting on it? What are you putting on it?
Um, we don't have any idea of what they're proposing there. Now, they're just seeking a comprehensive plan and a zoning. But the applicant is available, so maybe they have some insight.
Good evening again. Jeremy Kilbler, KDA Engineering. Address provided here representing the owner. Happy to answer any questions you may have. We feel like this is a natural extension of the already existing commercial and mixed-use property. Mixed use being to the west, commercial being to the south. I think it's also very important to note that the city's long-range transportation plan has identified Fertig Road as an east-to-west connector, and at some point, we would envision that intersection with Canoe Creek Road to be signalized or potentially even, I hate to say it, but roundabout. Those are also being discussed at the county level. But I'm happy to answer any questions. We really don't have any particular use proposed at this point in time. But permitted uses do include medical office, regular office, business professional, private school, medical clinics, and dental offices. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
No.
Okay. We'll close that and open it to the public. Any questions from the public? No comments? No comments from the public. We'll be closing that. Any questions amongst ourselves?
Or discussion?
I'd rather be going to something businesslike than the more residential. There's a difference.
That'd make Maria happy, so. No problem.
Okay, so, let's hear this first case, which is DRC case CPA 23-0004, ordinance number 2023-26. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve number 2023-26, based on the 16 findings in the Land Development Code.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Passes 5. Next, we're seeing DRC case number ZMA 23-0004, ordinance number 2023-27. Do I have any more?
I'll make a motion for that as well. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2023-27, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes.
Passes 5-0.
Okay. Again, we'll probably be reading both of these together and voting them separately, which will be DRC case number CPA 22-0010, ordinance number 2023-28, and ZMA 22-0012, ordinance number 2023-29.
Good evening, Commission. Tisha Manning, Senior Planner for Community Development. Before you is going to be a comprehensive plan amendment and a zoning map amendment for approximately 3.34 acres known as Minotti. It is located south of Minotti Road and east of Michigan Avenue. Likewise, staff is recommending approval, as well as the applicant is requesting approval. The existing future land use is low-density residential. The proposed future land use is commercial. The existing zoning is agricultural as well as RE, single-family dwelling, and the proposed zoning is business commercial. The development is compatible with the surrounding area and poses no adverse impacts on city facilities. So, I do want to point out here on the map, the project is located here directly to the south of it. It does have some type of commercial intensity there, as well as across the street. We recently rezoned that to private institutional as the future land use. The zoning to the west is professional, and again, to the south is a PUD, but it does have some commercial impacts in that PUD as far as the zoning. It is in align with the strategic plan goal of growth management, and staff does recommend approval of ordinances 2023-28 and 2023, 2023-29. Likewise, we ask that planning commission also recommends approval. Staff is available if you have any questions, as well as the applicant is available.
Any questions for the city?
No.
Would the applicant like to speak? Any questions for the applicant while we're having them come up?
My name is Steve Romke, and I'm the owner's representative for the owners. Yeah, any questions at all on it?
Do you have anything proposed at this time, or you just want to have the flexibility to do?
Nothing's really proposed until we know what the zoning and get through this. It does, it does benefit the area, though, because it will reduce trips out of that area with so many houses coming in there.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I agree. I think that we need more.
The whole, the whole intersection should be commercial around that.
Yeah, we need more professional business mixed in with the, all the housing that we have or we're currently getting and adding.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comments about this one? No public comments. Questions amongst yourselves?
No.
Good.
Let's start with ordinance number 2023-28, DRC case number CPA 22-0010. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for comprehensive plan amendment, ordinance number 2023-28, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes?
Passes 5-0?
Yes, sir. ZMA case, ZMA 22-0012, ordinance number 2023-29.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2023-29, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Also passes.
Passes 5-0.
All right. We have DRC case number ANX 22-0009, ordinance 2023-30.
Good evening, Commission. Tisha Manning, Senior Planner for Community Development. Before you is an annexation for approximately 14.36 acres known as Old Hickory Tree Estates. I apologize, we had an extra word, Creek, but it is Old Hickory Tree Estates. We verified that today. It is north of Gramercy Farms Road, east of Old Hickory Tree Road, and west of Hickory Tree Road. Again, this is a voluntary annexation, and staff is recommending approval. The, the property is contiguous and reasonably impact, and it abuts the city limits on the eastern property boundary. The existing county future land use is low-density residential, and the existing county zoning is R2 rural settlement as well as AC, which is agricultural conversion, agricultural conservation. So, the existing fut, the applicant at this time has not determined a future land use or zoning, so this is strictly just for annexation of the property, and we will continue to work with the applicant based upon their development of what the comprehensive plan and zoning will be in the future. It is in align with our strategic plan goal of growth management, and staff does recommend approval of ordinance 2023-30, and likewise, we ask that planning commission also recommend approval.
I would just like to ask for a clarification. On Exhibit A, the area that is light gray is currently the city limits. Is that correct?
Yes, the area that is light gray is currently the city limits.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the city?
Agriculture conservation.
Those are county zones.
Counties, and so, does it, it, does it mean there, it's conservation for a particular purpose, or?
It's just agricultural conservation, and I'm not exactly sure what the conservation of the county zoning is. A lot of times, what it equates to on our consistency table would be agricultural.
So, there's nothing special out there that they're trying to, okay.
Cows.
Dagmar Estegara, Deputy Director. Just to answer your question, just because I have the knowledge of working for the county, the agricultural conservation zoning is because the, the county does not have a conservation zoning classification. So, that's why they have it aggregated into the, together into one. But it does not mean, mean that it's there anything special to it. It's just a designation. And there's, that means that there could be properties that are in the conservation, in pretty certainly to be conservation, but also for agricultural uses.
They really should have a designation, shouldn't they?
I am. We can make the recommendation to the, to the county.
Just had to say that, I'm sorry.
Any questions for the city? Any, is the applicant here? Like to speak?
Good evening. Barry Walker, Altamont Springs, Florida. Do you need the full address?
Yes, please.
225 Southwestmont Drive, Suite 2040, Altamont Springs, Florida, 32714. I'm here on behalf of the owner, one of the owners. And I, to answer the first question, what are we planning on doing with it? I did bring a conceptual plan, if y'all want to see it.
Sure.
May I pass this around?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll share with them, so they can, oh, okay. I got plenty of copies. Thank you.
And may you leave one with the city for their records, please.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we're just asking to be annexed into the city. We'll be using city services for this project. The prior applicant before we got involved and took over the project, I think, was planning on doing townhomes. We, we didn't think that was compatible with what was across the street. What's across the street is single-family residential, so we're lowering the density from what was 103 proposed units to 54 units. So, we're, we're going down, and I think that's going to be consistent with what the zoning will be and what the comprehensive plan will be. And it'll certainly cut down on the possible traffic in the area, so it, it is consistent with what's across the street.
So, you're offering?
Actually, it's better than what's across the street, but that's just my opinion.
You're going to be offering bigger lots?
Yes, they will be 55-foot lots on the perimeter, and the interior lots will be 40 feet. It'd be like a celebration-type where you have, you know, the, the, in fact, the, the type of floor plan is actually in there as well. There'll be rear-entry garages off alleys, and it'll be celebration-type housing.
Celebration harmony?
Yeah. Anyway, it'll be. We think it'll be extremely nice. And my partner, Andrew Mattel, is here with me as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
When you all lay these plans out and everything, does anybody look way ahead? Instead, just for the moment, like, do you have a bus pull-in for the school buses to pick up the kids instead of hearing people? I rode in an ambulance last week. Hate to say that. And it was, I wish he would have pulled over and let me out, because he had, no, 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 no. He was fearing for his life, and I don't blame the fire people.
You know, when we get into the actual development of the site and the engineering of the site, if that's an issue for the, for the city, and we can accommodate that, to have a pullover zone for the bus.
Yeah, pullover zone or something.
I have no problem with doing something like that. We have the space to do it, so.
There you go, be ahead of the time.
Be ahead of the game. But yeah, to answer you, as we do look out far ahead, we see a need for this type of product in that area. I mean, there's, let's face it, there's people continuing to move to Florida, and there's still a shortage of housing.
Well, I see your entrance allows for something like a bus pull-in and pull-out because there's a decent roundabout in there.
I'd like to think that we, that we are forward-thinking in what we're going to, and there's an amenity feature in there as well with a swimming pool, and, and there'll be a centralized mailbox, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Other than the parking in the rears, was there to be any other parking, like, for visitors or anything like that on this property?
The streets are wide enough for on-street parking for short-term temporary visitation, and that should be more than sufficient. Each car will have two-car garage, and it'll also have a driveway. So, I mean, you could probably pick up four cars and park them off the street. I'm hoping that's enough. If you've got teenagers, it might not be, but.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, we have no questions. Anybody in the public like to make any comments? No public comments. We'll be closing for public comments and open for discussion. And if anybody likes to make a motion, be heard.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2023-30, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll be seeing now DRC case number CNU 22-0007. Okay, we'll be seeing now, DRC case number CNU twenty-two dash zero 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 seven, RES number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one R.
Good evening, Commission. Tisha Manning, Senior Planner for Community Development. I am presenting a conditional use, um, tonight for a personal mini-storage for U-Haul. It is approximately five point eight acres, and it's located east of La Florida Turnpike, west of Canoe Creek Road, and south of Continental Street. Staff does recommend approval of this conditional use. The current zoning of that property is highway business with a future land use of commercial. The proposed conditional use is going to be an acceleratory use to their, um, already, already-zoned commercial business and its mini-warehouse. The development is a conditional, um, vehicle for hire is a conditional use in the highway business zoning district, but it does not pose any adverse impacts on city facilities, and the development is compatible with the area. So, as you can see here, the future land use, again, this is the, um, location of the property. The property directly to the south is already zoned commercial, and the property to the north is actually the road and bridge for Osceola County. So, I just want to point out what that big blue is, in case you have any questions. And, and so, you can see by the zoning as well, it's going to be compatible with the property to the south, and what's already going on in that area as far as development. This is just a site image of the site itself. Again, they're proposing vehicle for hire, so one of the things that we, um, talked about with them was not having those vehicles parked in any of these drive aisles, and they will be utilizing this back area here, um, for the parking of, storage of the vehicles. And they do have some excess parking in this area, um, right in front of the office, as well as, um, to the north of the property where their building A is. It is in alignment with the growth management, um, strategic plan goal. And we do have approval with conditions, and one of the conditions is any vehicle not in current use shall not block or obstruct the internal drive aisles. And the rental vehicle shall only be parked in the excess space, excess spaces at the front and rear of the property. So, we do, um, ask that planning commission recommend approval of this resolution with the conditions as presented by staff. And I am available if you have any questions. I don't see that my applicant is here, but, um, I am available.
That's right next to that, uh, little gas station that was closed for a good while, isn't that?
Yeah, it's Pizza City now.
Pizza City, directly to the south of it.
So, Tisha, that's my, my question is, because of that road and the immense amount of traffic backup, but school hours and everything, is, are there going to be some change in that, I don't know, I want to say exit areas or whatever for the road? Because that's, I, I mean, um.
You mean like a ride-in, ride-out?
Yeah, something like that, because it's going to be obviously bigger vehicles and a lot of probably in and out if it's mini-storage.
Well, they've been a mini-warehouse there since they were annexed into the city, and they did have this use already, um, they were already doing this use on their property. It just was not in approved use, and so that's why this conditional use is before you, so.
Oh, so it's already operating as that?
They were already operating, yes. They have ceased.
So, it's not expanding or more?
They have ceased that use until we can get an approved conditional use, but they were already doing the shoes there.
Is there any reason why they're not here tonight?
Um, no. I didn't hear anything back of, uh, absence, you know, an emergency or something may have happened.
I have a question about, uh, they included a, kind of a site map here. And, and your, one of your conditions, it says, rental vehicles shall only be parked in the excess spaces at the front and rear of the property, and they have some markings that say U-Haul truck typical. Is that considered excess spaces where they show that, or just the spaces on the left-hand side of the?
So, it will be just the spaces on the left-hand, so that site map that you're looking at, I have asked that they update that since they've been working with staff. They just weren't able to get that back to me in time. But we have resolved that, because they did have some parking here in this drive aisle that we have already resolved that they will no longer do. As well as, um, they will be making some improvements here to this area in putting in some landscaping and some different things that I asked them as far as to dress up that, um, internal parking area. So, they are making some additional landscaping, um, buffering here in this area. But they will not have those vehicles parked, um, in this drive aisle as it is on that concept plan that you, that you're referring to now.
So, is that, those existing spaces there, are they large enough to accommodate the type of rent-for-hire vehicle?
Yes, because, um, right now, the only vehicles that they currently have is just the U-Hauls, and a U-Haul fits in a typical parking space, um, of that size, as well as, um, they have the excess space here at the, again, at the north of the property where they can park, you know, some of their vehicles that they may want to do for advertising and things like that, but the most of their vehicles that they're just storing will be back here in this grassy area.
Are you giving them, um, an amount of vehicles they can have, a minimum or a maximum amount?
No.
And how long ago did you ask them to update this and get it to you?
Um, I asked them to update that. I began at the beginning of the week, and the actual project manager of the project was out on vacation. So, with that, maybe the person that was filling in for him didn't have access to the information or something, so they weren't able to update it, and I didn't want to not provide you guys their plan, so that's why I gave you that one.
Is the facade going to be as clean as their, as their competitors down the street? I'm not going to say the name of it.
The facade of?
Of how it looks from the outside, you know?
How the trucks look? Is that what you mean?
I don't know.
Not sure that she could answer that. Not sure she would know whether or not they're going to do that or not.
She's, she's already requested landscaping.
Is it going to look as presentable as Rocket Lockers was?
Well, they did, they did give us a landscape plan here.
Yeah, I know. I saw that. It's just that we're becoming a warehouse on one ninety-two.
Yeah, but this is.
This is not one ninety-two.
No, I know that, but, I mean, it's here, there.
Well, we do have non-residential architectural standards for new development that's coming in. This is not a new development, so this development is already existing, and I did, because it is a conditional use, ask that they, um, increase the landscape buffer on that area.
Well, thank you.
Did we already see this before in February?
You, you saw the zoning. Yes.
Right, to bring them into compliance.
Correct.
My, my only comment is, they're not here tonight. They didn't get her an updated map, but she's already told me not to be so mean that maybe somebody was out on vacation, so.
He was definitely out on vacation, I can say that.
Don't get in trouble.
Do we feel comfortable with moving forward with this?
It's the commission's pleasure.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that. I think the proposed landscaping is, is nice, and, uh, I mean, form follows function, right? So, people are renting trucks. Supply and demand, right? A lot of people moving here, moving out. I mean, it, I don't think it's really going to change the overall look of the facility, considering all the orange doors they already have.
Yeah, that's what we want to change.
They've always been there. They've always had them there anyway.
That's what they're saying. Now, they're just doing it the right way.
Do we have any other questions for staff?
No.
Nope.
And I just want to address, um, um, Commission Member Landry. That's the reason for the asking for the landscape, is for them to bring it all the way down, um, the front of their property here, to try and hide some of those doors that are already here. So, that was one of my reasons for asking for the landscape.
Good for you.
Who does the sidewalk belong to? Is that county, or? It would be nice to see a wider sidewalk there, but I know that's, there's nobody here I can ask for that.
You're asking for a lot of ideas.
How do we go about that?
County. You need to go talk to the commissioner.
Now, you got two items to mention to them.
Um, if I, if I may address the council.
Yes.
Dagmar Estegara, Deputy Director. If I place, uh, it's a pleasure of the board, uh, if you want, if we, you wish that landscape to be presented as part of the conditional use, you can add that landscape requirement as a condition of, 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 condition of the conditional use. So, we will add it as a third condition, and that way, we can guarantee that we get that landscaping.
I mean, it seems that they already intend to do it, so, I mean, I wouldn't mind asking for that condition.
If we put it in the condition, then it'll be, they'll have to be set in stone, then, so they can have to do it.
Well, again, remember, it's a, correct, it's a recommendation to the council, but if the conditions are adopted and consumed into the conditional use, then absolutely those conditions become a part of the conditional use, and a failure to meet any such condition creates a zoning violation, so. The pleasure of the commission. Still have public comment to ask for.
Do we have any public comments on this topic, please? Okay, no public comment. We'll be closing public comments. Any other questions amongst ourselves, or a motion?
Uh, if we don't have any comments, I guess I'll make a motion. Uh, so I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one oh, or I'm sorry, dash zero zero one R, conditional use, um, with conditions. Those conditions being any vehicle not current use shall not block or obstruct the internal drive aisles. Also, rental vehicles shall only be parked in the excess spaces at the front and rear of the property. And I would like to add a condition that the, uh, landscape plan, uh, that was submitted, that they, uh, move forward with adding that as a, a condition as well to install that landscaping. Uh, and I'd like to make that motion to recommend approval based on those conditions and the six factual matters in the land development code.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Passes five zero.
Next case is DRC case CNU twenty-two dash zero 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 one zero, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one zero three R.
Good evening, council members. I'm Virginia Renteria, Associate Planner for Community Development. The case I'm presenting for you tonight is a conditional use for a place of worship located on the southeast corner of Pennsylvania Avenue and Eleventh Street. The current zoning is central business district, and I would like to note that the public notice that was sent out, um, there was an error on it. It said central business district two. It should have been central business district one. The future land use is commercial, um, and a place of worship does require a conditional use permit in the CBD one zoning district. Staff reviewed this request and found that there are no adverse impacts on, um, city facilities. Currently, as you can see for the future land use, the whole area is, um, commercial, and currently, um, it is a mixture of CBD one and CBD two in the downtown area. Up here, you can see a site plan. Services will be held on Wednesday nights and Sunday mornings. The location has a maximum capacity of a hundred and ninety-eight people, and the applicant has confirmed that there would be about sixty to seventy people in attendance during their open hours. The land development code does not have any parking requirements for businesses located in CBD one. The applicant has come forward with a proposed parking agreement to help with the no parking requirements for the site. The property is located on the north, and then on the left-hand side are the two spaces he has offered for a parking agreement to help alleviate that, um, parking issue. The proposed request meets the intent of a strategic goal for growth management, and staff has reviewed and has requested approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash one zero R three, and is requesting for a planning commission to approve the resolution. The applicant is here for questions, as is staff. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, very quickly, and it's, yeah, it's, uh, resolution two zero two-three dash one oh three R. I, I conferred with, um, City Attorney Manzares earlier with regard to the typo on the notification, but the remainder of the materials, um, i- it's a de minimis typo to the fact that we were of the opinion that the case can move forward if the commission is comfortable with it substantively, as the rest of the materials were consistent with the presentation. So, it's, it's still the pleasure of the commission, but from a legal standpoint, we think the city's on good ground.
That was going to be my question.
Yes, sir. Again, like all these things, it's at the pleasure of the commission, but we did look at that.
There's very little difference between CBD two, so. I would like to ask, uh, for a legislative clarification on the, on the parking exhibit D. I'm just trying to understand what, where the proposed, uh, parking was, is it on the left, the left-hand side, the red rectangle in the left bottom corner?
Yes, that is one of the sides, and on the right-hand side.
But where is that? Because I know where that is, and I know it's down here.
That's the parking lot right there, next to Pets on a Cloud.
Yeah, exactly, but it, well, I guess because it looks like an empty green lot. It's that parking lot, okay. I, I would just have to say that, staff, you feel very comfortable about this, because I, Wednesday nights downtown in the, the city, having the church service, parking is already a big issue. I find this kind of a.
The rectangle four on the left. Behind.
Doesn't look like there's much.
Number four, I don't really recall as much, but behind one, I think, if that's the right building that I'm looking at. Because it is adjacent to that.
Behind one is not the property that they're offering the parking on. It's be only on four and ten.
I know, and that's what I'm surprised at, because behind one is a lot of space, but four, I, you're the, I'm agreeing with you. I don't know that there's a lot there, not from my recollection. And if there's sixty people in there, one to two people per car, down there.
Because on ten, there's a business there. What about his parking when his tenants come in?
Especially on a Wednesday night, if that's when services are. Isn't Wednesday night when they have the big event down?
One time, um, once a month, every, the last Wednesday of every month.
Last Wednesday every month.
That's marketplace.
Marketplace, that's right.
Where is the number one hundred and ninety-eight people? Where's that number?
Um, the fire department makes that determination when they go out and they do the inspection.
Okay, so that's the property?
Correct.
Okay, so, but if, if that building that's there will be an occupancy type of assembly, meaning that there's no way you could fit a hundred and ninety-eight people in there?
The applicant is also here for any additional questions aside from city staff.
Estimating sixty people.
Yeah.
To a service, roughly.
Hello to all of you. My name is Pastor Joe Hernandez. I feel happy to be here tonight, so, uh, if you have any question, uh, I can answer them.
Pastor Joe, what's your address, please?
Downtown.
Yeah, of course, like, like Virginia was saying, the project manager, we have two parking. parking agreements. You guys were speaking about Wednesday. And toward churches, so in church. Notice that I decide over property.
For a while to see what the amount.
Here, Pastor Galley, and we were there eating ice cream. We had a great time, but Pennsylvania Avenue on Sundays, I don't want to say the word, but there's nothing happening there. Get out and walk to New York Avenue and, and experiment everything that is going through in the development and the growth here in, in downtown St. Cloud.
So basically, Wednesdays, what you usually do in your churches anywhere, like Bible studies and stuff?
I'm sorry?
On the Wednesdays, you could be, well, basically doing like Bible studies and stuff.
We do Bible study. We're gonna be there like from seven thirty to nine P.M. on Wednesdays. And on Sunday mornings, we're gonna be there from eleven A.M. to twelve thirty, twelve forty-five A.M., twelve thirty-five P.M.
So in terms of the parking accommodations, I mean, I know you mentioned currently you're sixty-ish, but of course, when they find out how good you are, it might be more than that. Would the parking be able to
Amen, glory to God.
Would the parking be able to accommodate it? I mean, because I guess the building had the potential to have like a hundred or something.
Now, no, we have a plan for that. I, I know that what you're saying is gonna happen. So we plan to do a second service on Sunday to accommodate just the people that we're saying, and obviously not pass and not create a problem. The, the church that we're, a building that I'm building with my wife, we don't want to create a problem. And the other side, we want to be a blessing. So if we grow so much, and we know that it's gonna create a certain situation with the parking lot, we plan to do a second service on Sunday to handle, eh, that we have a problem, a program for kids, for youth, eh, and we're helping and, 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 and being a blessing to the people in need here in St. Cloud. I was moved, I was living in Kissimmee when I got here, but I moved to St. Cloud, because if I'm, I'm, eh, building a church here, I said, I gotta live in St. Cloud. So that's why I'm here and, and planning all, all of this.
Any other questions for him?
Do you have any concerns with, with your congregation being able to find parking on the last Wednesday when they have monthly market or anything like that?
Yep.
They spoke to me about, they have an activity on the last Wednesday of, of each month.
Marketplace.
What, you know, I, where, where does that happen? Because I know about it, and I've been there a lot on, on Sundays, but on Wednesday, the last Wednesday of each month, I haven't been there.
It happens on New York and Pennsylvania.
In both avenues?
Yes.
Okay.
They close both of them now.
And all the other ones, too.
So they'll be completely closed, you won't have any traffic.
It locks you out.
It'll lock you out.
No, the, the thing is that how, how do people walk there?
Walk?
Because they just walk from different, eh, different parts?
Delaware, Wyoming, and people park in front of my house to walk to that. And I've had to put up things that says do not park.
Of course, of course. No, I, we're a very, how can I tell you this? We're a very organized church. Right now, we're meeting on nine oh nine ten street, eh, St. Cloud of Florida, eh, that's the Presbyterian Church. We're meeting in the mobile homes. Eh, if one of, if, if one of you want to pass a Sunday, I even have a parking team. Eh, we're gonna be very organized in that area, eh, and we're gonna be telling people the first meetings where you can park. I think that's gonna take a little bit of my, my message on Sundays and Wednesdays, for the first two months, where you can park and where you cannot park. So in, in that, Carmelo is telling me, on Wednesday, I'm gonna, this, this month before we start to, to do the church there, I'm gonna be traveling on Wednesday, the last Wednesday of the month, to see where we can park and how can people walk, how the people walk to the activity. The same, and I'm, I don't have a concern with that. People are gonna walk. The, the fifteen, eighteen people that come on Wednesday, they're gonna have to park where you can park, and like how the people go to the activity, they will walk to the church.
Any other comments, questions?
There's alleyways in there, too. Is she gonna use all those alleyways, and the cubs are gonna have to come out to have you towed out of there and there? It is just such a hard area. Pastor, I don't mean to say, Heavenly Father, please. You know, I'm glad you're coming to town, yes, we all need the Lord, but that is a very active, and the city people have been doing a great job, so have all the commissioners, to bring everybody into town, but that is. I'll invite you, you can sit in front of my house, I'll give you a little chair, and you can put water there, and you can watch the traffic and everybody, and it's.
You're, you're talking about Wednesday, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Wednesday, Sunday, Saturdays, everything.
Sunday, I've been there, Maria, and nothing's going on on Sunday.
On Sunday, no?
On Pennsylvania Avenue?
No, not in Pennsylvania. You're talking about the major
No, no, I'm in Pennsylvania, Sunday morning, eh, literally Sunday during the day, the complete day, Pennsylvania Avenue.
It's a very busy area. It's a wonderful area. I mean, they're trying to grow the town, but it's hard. And I lived in that house for forty-seven years.
We're gonna be a blessing, Maria, you'll see.
I hope so.
No more questions?
Any more questions?
I have a question for city staff about
Of course. Thank you for listening. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you very much.
And I'm open to, to any questions, anything you want to say, eh, just as a testimony, eh, I want to mention this, when I got to the city and started the whole process, I started the process in September, eh, we already have six months in the process, eh, they told me, you're one of the first pastors that come here and do the things the right way. So people go ahead and build the church, and then they come here, and we wanted to congratulate you for that. So I wanted to say that here, too.
That is, you were right.
We're doing, we're doing things in, in the proper way, because eh, that's how our church does its thing, so God bless you all.
God bless you, too.
Thank you so much. Okay, I believe we have a question from
Yeah, I had a question for staff about, eh, I seem to have lost it in all my papers here, but there was something about an exemption from the seven hundred and fifty-foot rule. Could you explain that?
Yes, it is on
I've got, I've got that as well, the
It's on page four of the staff report. So, um, if this were to be approved, this doesn't affect the surrounding businesses?
No.
That seven hundred and fifty, um, distance separation does not apply here, so it wouldn't
The alcohol establishments are exempted out in those districts from
Because it's the entertainment district.
From the CBD, correct.
Okay.
So there's no impact on the businesses for that, from that standpoint.
But since they're moving in, that would have been an impact that they would have chosen not to have put their facility there, right? Not that the, that they would move in and then those that were already established had to change, right? Okay. I, I was just saying that that rule, if that was applicable here, it wouldn't be that the other facilities would have to adjust to the new
You're saying it would preclude another establishment for coming in and selling alcohol within seven hundred and fifty?
And change it.
Yeah, that, Marissa God, Deputy Director, that's correct. Whatever businesses are existing there, they're not, they, they don't need to move because of the church. Any new business moving in that does, does not need to meet that requirement, because the distance requirement is for the alcohol-selling business, not the church. So if the church is there, whoever future tenants that might serve alcohol does not need to meet that distance requirement.
They're still exempt.
And that form that we will give to the church, they have to agree, because it's inside the entertainment district.
Got it, perfect, okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
So I could open for public comments. I have, uh, Mr., Mr. Robert. Don't want to mess up the last name.
I pronounce it Beecham, sir. Robert Beecham, two thirty-one Miami Avenue.
Oh, your time's up.
I didn't do it. Two thirty-one Miami Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida, three four seven six nine. This is the one that I was waiting to come tonight. And there is a lot of, I guess, opposition of a church coming downtown, no particular church. I've been here personally myself over thirty-nine years. I think this is my sixth time that I've come down here that a church has tried to come in downtown, and I come with the same thought for you guys. I'm not gonna tell you what to do, it's your job to figure it out. We're a very small downtown. I own five buildings downtown, thirty-nine years of struggling and watching this town like a roller coaster to go from nobody making it, to everybody just struggling to hang on. What we need downtown is food, shops, restaurants, eh, you know, eh, the entertainment district now has come through, because the city has a vision. We've got a master plan for what we want downtown, and I can guarantee you, none of you can find in any of the master plan, anything with the city that says the church is gonna be part of that. This should have been taken out of our, eh, I don't know, in your code or whatever, I don't know exactly what it is, saying that they're not allowed downtown, you know, because there's a lot of stuff that's just not allowed downtown. When that was changed to a, um, entertainment district, I'm thinking that's something that the city should have just jumped right on and changed that and said, look, we, you know, this isn't part of our big plan for downtown. Parking is gonna be an issue. I know the, the, the spaces he says it's gonna be, one is Dave Askew, or a past city councilman, eh, there's two bars there. They fill that place up, you know, by, you know, by ten, eleven o'clock, they're starting to go in there. The other space is also Mr. Askew's, it's only two parking spaces behind that. It, it's gonna be an issue. You know, I, I own at the other end of the block where the church is gonna go, I got seventeen parking spaces. I don't want to have anybody towed, you know? Eh, eh, it's one of these things that, that's for me, it was for my renters, when they rent it, I'm moving my business in there. Eh, I'm moving off New York Avenue, I'm semi-retiring this year and going to a smaller store. And parking is a big, big issue downtown. The, the Wednesday night, eh, you know, event that they hold, the last Wednesday of the month, they're hoping to do this more often than just a Wednesday night, you know, one Wednesday night a month. They're, they were talking possibly doing it twice a month, you know? And Wednesday night's been a good night to do it. Friday, people are busy, other towns are doing stuff. So I think they hit a niche. If you ever, I don't know if any of you guys have been downtown on a Wednesday night, it is hopping. I'm a church-going person, you know, just like you had said, God forgive me, you know, I'm not against churches, I'm not against anything. We've got such a small district down here, you know, I really don't think it's something that is in the big plan of you guys, you know, or the plan of the city to put something like that in, but there's nothing that really says they couldn't come and do this. If you had changed those codes, I think it just wouldn't be a moot point. They say, oh, it's not allowed down there, because it would not be permissible downtown, but right now it's under conditional use. So, eh, I think I covered the stuff that I was gonna, you know, go, but it's just, eh, I had some, some points here, but, eh, the same thing. I know you guys aren't really getting anybody, because I said I would come here tonight, but I can guarantee you for the council that's coming up, you're gonna see this place packed with all the businesses down here. Pennsylvania Avenue, it's not a lot going on right now. Look what we just went through for over a year. That whole street's been torn up for a year. There is no, everybody's struggling over there, they're waiting for them to finally finish up. So Pennsylvania can be just like New York, and Massachusetts Avenue is gonna be that. That's our three main streets. We're hoping it's gonna turn into it, so thanks for
Thank you, sir.
The time, I appreciate it. Eh, I, I hope you make a wise decision.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comments? We'll be closing public comments, questions or comments amongst yourselves, and a motion, if you have any.
Yeah, before, before the commission makes a motion, I do want to make a point for the commission, just from a legal perspective, so that you're aware of the broad picture. Uh, the comments from Mr. Beecham, I think his closing was that there's nothing that precludes, eh, this type of, of, of use, and, and it's accurate. There are, there are laws and federal laws that require that, eh, that government treat, eh, religious assembly on equal terms with non-religious assembly or institution. You gotta keep that in mind. That's, that's paramount to the analysis, eh, on this, on this application, so I make that comment to you, eh, before you take whatever well-guided action I'm sure you're gonna take.
Well, I just want to say that I, you know, although I am somewhat concerned about the parking situation, I do believe that the use of this space or this property would be at different times, for the most part, than other events that are occurring downtown in, in the entertainment district. And I also, um, you know, I'm a huge proponent of areas being able to be used for different functions at different times, so that they're never stagnant, they're never, you know, there's always things going on. And in some way, you know, maybe these people coming to church here may bring more business to downtown. You know, it may attract more people. You know, people that live downtown would be able to walk to this establishment, which I like the idea of that as well.
People coming out of everything they've done from Friday to Saturday may need to be going to church on a Sunday.
That's true, that's true.
And I mean, I, I know that this is a new addition, but you've got just two blocks the other direction are churches. And I, I, I just think that if there is a parking issue or problems, et cetera, that's gonna be corrected by the, by this, eh, place of worship. They're going to either grow so much, they're gonna say, we can't be down here, we're gonna go build a great big church somewhere, and, and, but that, that's up for them to, to fix. We can't fix the world for, for everybody, so.
You have to remember also that, eh, then, unfortunately and thankfully, eh, being that the city's finishing all this road work, the lot next to my house is finally getting emptied out, and we'll be able to have parking there again.
I'd like to go back to the nice angled parking we used to have, but let's not open that whole can of worms.
And although this, this work has, in some ways, seemed to have caused a lot of businesses to, you know, be struggling and hurting, um, I will say, you know, there's not a lot of businesses jumping
On board.
On board in this area right now.
Yes, very good point. I was gonna mention that, too. There's a lot of empty facilities down there that I would prefer to see filled for a while, if they make it, they make it, if they don't, that's up to
Right, whether it be a church, a business, a shop.
Somebody.
Anything, yeah.
An olive garden.
Or an olive garden.
So, now that everybody's spoken and talked about it, anybody have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash one zero three R, based on the six factual matters with the Land Development Code.
I second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes.
Ms. Carney, did you say aye? Ms. Doug, I didn't hear your vote.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Motion to approve passes five zero.
I would say my prayers.
Okay, um, last case is, eh, DRC Case Number CNU twenty-three dash zero 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 one, Resolution twenty-three dash one oh five R.
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Carol Zepeda, and I am with the Community Development Department. I am presenting the St. Cloud Marketplace Conditional Use. This property is approximately ten acres, and it is located south of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, east of Leibok Boulevard, and west of Tay West Drive. The applicant is requesting approval of St. Cloud Marketplace Conditional Use, and staff is also recommending approval. The property is zoned highway business with a future land use of commercial. A childcare center requires a conditional use permit in the highway business zoning district, and staff has reviewed this request and found that there is no adverse impacts to the city facilities. The property is zoned highway business with a future land use of commercial, a childcare center requires a conditional use permit in the highway business zoning district, and staff has reviewed this request and found that there is no adverse impacts to the city facilities. Here are graphic representations of the future land use and the zoning maps depicting the commerc, the commercial land use and the highway business zoning district for context, and you can see the surrounding future land use and the surrounding zoning. I have also added on here the graphic representation of the overall conceptual plan for this site, the requested conditional use is located in Building G, where's the pointer? There we go.
Do we have this in our packet?
Right here.
Yeah.
You do? Mm-hmm. And it is in the southwest corner in Building G, so it's right here. In the bottom left of that parcel. It's right here. The grayed out building. The proposed request meets the intent of the strategic plan goal for growth management. Uh, staff reviewed this request for a conditional use on April, before April fourth, staff recommends approval of the Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three dash one zero five R, for a conditional use, based on the six factual matters identified in the land development code, it is requested that this planning commission recommend approval as well, and at this time, staff is available for questions, the applicant is also present and is available for any questions that the commission might have.
Any questions from the commission?
Is it, is that location, is there a storage facility that's adjacent on that road, or am I thinking of a different road?
You're thinking of further down.
Okay.
There's currently a seven eleven on that corner. Where, if you were look, on the, yeah, it's gonna be in the left-hand top corner.
Yeah, you have residential, so this is, this is Osceola County, so, in the bottom here, you have residential, and then this is undeveloped still.
See, the church can go there.
If you recall, we had a development come through here a few months ago, for the area to the right, that...
Yes, the hot, they actually have a hospital in this parcel, so if you, I'll go right here, overall, in this top end.
I've got it, I've got the visual now, okay.
So they have a hospital in this location, and they're gonna have an urgent care right here in this one.
That's good.
So they're providing on their daycare facility, so it's, they're, they're doing an overall commercial where they're also, whoever's coming in, that's gonna be working in that hospital, working in, in that urgent care, they can take their kids to that daycare, any doctors that work astronomical hours, can just take their kid into that place, walk them over, you don't have a lot of traffic, because if they're parking to go to work, for example, they're just gonna walk their child over, they're not gonna cause any of the ingress or egress traffic going into that location. And I do have a representative here for this.
Hey, good evening, commission, uh, Nathan Milch, uh, with Kimley Horn and Associates, one eight nine, South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida, three two eight oh nine, um, we're here representing the applicant, um, we've been working with staff for a while on this project, and, uh, we respectfully, uh, request your approval.
You have any questions for the applicant while he's up?
Not really.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also do wanna, uh, let the commission know, remind the commission that this is a conceptual plan, so, although this is an overall of what the site could be, it could alter changed on uses that are available in HB zoning district, highway business.
But does it pass through us first?
I'm sorry?
Does it come through us, too?
So, uh, the site, the site development construction, the site construction plan would go to the DRC. The hospital is currently in progress of being built, though that is an absolute, the hospital is currently being built on that location.
Dagmar Estegar, Deputy Director, just a point of clarification, the site development plan does not go through this board, the site, the subdivision, uh, plan, the preliminary subdivision plan did go in front of the city council a couple of months ago, and was approved, right now, they're in the process of plotting the property, um, we know that it will be commercial, uh, development, the uses are going to be compatible to the HB zoning, um, what, um, Carol was trying to, uh, say is that the conceptual plan that, eh, that is being on the screen right now is in a conceptual, uh, way, and we're not approving any site plan, uh, the site plan is done through the DRC process.
Correct, and just, yeah, this is just a conditional use, that's the issue tonight for the childcare center in this, in this, in the zoning district, that's the narrow focus for the commission, based on your land development criteria, that you're well familiar with.
Any questions, ladies and gentlemen, for anybody up?
No.
No? Any public comments at this time? There are no public comments, we'll close public comments, any questions, comments amongst yourselves? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number Twenty Twenty-three dash one zero five R, based on the six factual matters within the land development code.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Passes five zero.
Passes five zero. Our next meeting is? Madam Secretary?
Next meeting is June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, at six P.M.
Any other business? All good? Okay, motion closed?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody, sorry for...